Let's open in prayer to somebody who said, "We're only going to get through two verses." You might be correct. Not saying I know anybody that just said that, but you might be correct. So, all right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray that, uh, I believe you're pleased when your people gather around your word and wrestle with your word and have open discussions and seek to be strengthened one to another. Lord, I know that you're pleased with that. Your Holy Spirit is at work through that. And we pray that we would take all of these thoughts captive to the word of God, that you would guide us and you would lead us by your Holy Spirit. We pray in your name, amen. All right, so, um, so I want to, I'm just going to tell you that I am, uh, trying to do my best to make this as clear as possible. And I know that sometimes in Revelation, you come in and you're like, you leave and you're like, "What just happened?" Right? "Not my intention, not what I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to just make people go wow, I'm not trying to do that." So I'm going to try to do a little bit here today. So just here's three points I want to make today. Is, we talked about this last week, chapter 20, verses 1 through 3, if you're thinking about marking it on a timeline, uh, the events of chapter 20, verses 1 through 3, on a timeline, happened before Revelation chapter 9. So that is, uh, that is this particular, um, is what I'm talking about in terms of how the book of Revelation is put together. Uh, this is on page 4 of your handout. So the point is, is that the, these cycles of seven tell the story in apocalyptic language from Christ's ascension up to the end. So we've talked about this before, but how many times has the world come to an end in Revelation? Three times. So we think that, like, what's the, what is the, the name of the, of the last battle in Revelation? What's the name? Armageddon. Does it have any other names? The answer is yes. It's also known as Gog and Magog. There's, there's, the, the battle has multiple names and we only think of it as Armageddon. The point is, is that, is that there are three different cycles that happen where it is Christ's ascension up to the end. And so you're going to have this timeline that goes from, from his ascension all the way to the end, but you're going to have that three times. So now we go into, into chapter 20, and that's why we're saying that, that chapter 20, verses 1 through 3, happened before chapter 9, because chapter 9 is in a different cycle. That makes sense? So, uh, so turn your bibles to Revelation, chapter 20, verses 1 through 3. So it says, "Then I saw an angel coming down from heaven, holding in his hand the key to the bottomless pit and the great chain. And he seized the dragon, the ancient serpent, who was the devil and Satan, and bound him for a thousand years, and threw him into the pit, and shut it, and sealed it over him, uh, so that he might not deceive the nations any longer until the thousand years were ended. After that, he must be released for a little while." When he's released for a little while, what do we, what have we called that time period? The half a time. Okay? So we're going to see that, um, later on in, in chapter 20. Okay? So in chapter 9, uh, it is, it is really talking about this half a time period. So it's later on the timeline. That's what we're saying. Okay? So another couple of things I want to, want you to see here is, what does it mean for, um, for God to, uh, that Satan is bound? Uh, so we talked about this last week, and I just want to give you just a sense of what this looks like. And, um, so turn over to Matthew's Gospel, Matthew, chapter 12. So Jesus tells this story, this is verse 22. Uh, Jesus tells this story. So they come and they say to him, uh, that, "Jesus, you are, um, you are, uh, you're an insane person, you're crazy, and you're casting out demons, and you're casting out demons by demons." And he says, "That makes no sense." Uh, so this is what he says, verse 22. "Then a demon-depressed man was blind, and mute, was brought to him, and he healed him, so that the man spoke and saw. And all the people were amazed and said, 'Can this be the son of David?' But when the Pharisees heard it, they said, 'It is only by Beelzebub, the prince of demons, that this man casts out demons.' Knowing their thoughts, he said to them, 'Every kingdom divided against itself is laid waste, and no city or house divided against itself will stand.' And if Satan casts out Satan, he is divided against himself.'" Makes sense, right? Um, "How then will his kingdom stand? And if I cast out demons by Beelzebub, by whom do your, your sons cast them out? Therefore, they will be your judges. But if it is by the Spirit of God that I cast out demons, then the kingdom of God has come upon you." In other words, what he's saying is, "I am the promised Messiah, and I mean, this is who I am," right? Verse 29, "Or how can someone enter a strong man's house and plunder his goods unless he first binds the strong man? Then indeed he may plunder his house; whoever is not with me is against me, and whoever does not gather with me, uh, with me scatters." So here's the point, is that, is that in chapter 20, uh, God is saying, "Look, Satan is bound." Uh, some people describe it as, "God has put him on a leash and determined the length of his leash." But is he on a leash, and he, and so therefore can he go out and still, uh, wreak havoc in our world? Yes. But does he have that full authority? No. Okay? So why would, why would God bind Satan? Uh, essentially what we're seeing here is that, uh, what our job is, called by God, uh, in the finished work of, in the victory of Jesus, is bind a strong man and says to his people, "Now go plunder the house of Satan." You see that? Makes sense? So let's, uh, let's look at a couple of other places here. Uh, turn to Colossians 2. And, and again, how, because this is all cross-language. How does, uh, but it's also baptism language, and this is what I want you to see today. So Colossians, chapter 2, I'm getting there. General Electric Power Company. Galatians, Ephesians, Philippians, Colossians. Sorry, nobody, you've never heard that before? Oh, sorry. All right. All right. All right, so Colossians, chapter 2, verse 9. "For in him the whole fullness of deity dwells bodily; and you have been filled in him, who is the head of all rule and authority. In him also you were circumcised with a circumcision made without hands." What is that referring to? You have been circumcised, but you've been circumcised not with hands. Okay? Uh, and it's a circumcision not of the flesh. So a circumcision made without hands by putting off the body of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ. How did all that happen? Verse 12, "Having been buried with him in baptism, in which you were also raised with him through faith and the powerful working of God, who raised him from the dead." So again, here's, here's the point. What is baptism? Uh, death and resurrection. Okay? "And you, who were dead in your trespasses and the circumcision of your flesh, God made alive together with him, having forgiven us all our trespasses." So Ephesians, chapter 2, turn over to Ephesians, chapter 2, verse 1. Ephesians 2, verse 1, "And you were dead in your trespasses and sins." The word for dead here is you were a corpse, you were dead as a doornail. Do you feel dead? Like I'm, like, like, like how, how, when you go out and talk to people in the, uh, in the world, and they're walking around and you're like, "You're a dead person, apart from Christ." They just think you're a crazy person. Right? Um, but that's what it says. Okay? "And you were dead in the trespasses and sins in which you once walked, following the course of this world, following the prince of the power of the air, the Spirit that is now at work, and the sons of disobedience, among whom we all once lived, in the passions of our flesh, carrying out the desires of the body and the mind, and were by nature children of wrath, like the, like the rest of mankind. But God being rich in mercy, because of the great love with which He loved us, even when we were dead in our trespasses, made us alive together with Christ. By grace you have been saved." So you're dead, and He made you alive. According to Colossians, chapter 2, how did He do that? Through baptism. Okay? So go back to Colossians, chapter 2. So verse 13, "And you, who were dead in your trespasses and the uncircumcision of your flesh, God made alive together with him, having forgiven us all our trespasses, by canceling the record of debt that stood against us with its legal demands. This he set aside, nailing it to the cross. He disarmed the rulers and authorities and put them to open shame by triumphing over them in him," or some translations say, "in it," that is the cross. So, uh, so he's triumphed over the, uh, over sin, death, and the devil by means of the cross. Matter of fact, um, it's like St. Augustine says that, um, that the cross is God's mousetrap for Satan. I love that. Right? He just, just, just conquers Satan through the cross. And, uh, okay. Uh, let's go to a couple of other places. So 2 Peter, chapter 2. We're just thinking, again, we're just thinking about the conquering and the binding of Satan is what, all, that's all we're thinking about right now. So 2 Peter, uh, chapter 2. Now, this is verse 4, so I'm just going to read you a couple of things here. "For if God did not spare angels when they sinned, but cast them into hell and committed them to chains of gloomy darkness, to be kept until the judgment." This is, again, this is what's happening here. Right? So they're bound, but then they're going to be released, uh, for, for the judgment. "If he did not spare the, the, the ancient world, but preserve Noah," and I'm not going to keep going, but you're, you're just seeing the, uh, the binding here. Okay? Questions on that? So there's great hope, dear brothers and sisters in Christ, that, uh, that God has bound, that Satan is bound, but we still see His effects in the world. Yes? We still see His effects in, in our, even in our own lives, uh, but not to the fullest, uh, yet. Okay? All right. So let's go back to Revelation, chapter 20. So, um, let's see here, where we're at. Uh, verse 3. "And threw him into the pit, and shut it, and sealed it over him, so that he might not deceive the nations any longer until the thousand years were ended. After that, uh, he must be released for a little while." So again, this is, this, we're going to get to the, to the millennium here. That's a, that's an important one. I'm trying to think about how we do that, but, uh, let's keep going. Um, verse 4, "Then I saw thrones, and seated on them were those to whom the authority to judge was committed; and I saw the souls of those who had been beheaded for the testimony of Jesus and for the word of God, and for those who had not worshiped the beast or its image, and had not received its mark on their foreheads or their hands." So here's, we got to get this. So verse, and verse 4. "They came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years." Tell me what that means. It's hard, isn't it? Okay? So, uh, so they came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years. "The rest of the dead did not come to life until the thousand years were ended." This is the first resurrection. So what is the first resurrection? According to the scriptures? I'm sorry? Yes, it is baptism. It is, we would also use the word conversion. Okay? So, so the first resurrection is baptism. It is those who have been, died in Christ and raised to new life in him. That's the first resurrection. So now let's go back. So they came, so verse 4, "They came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years." What does that mean? So back to my little chart here. The millennium is happening now. If you understand the millennium is happening now, as God in Christ is reigning and ruling now for one purpose and one purpose only, and that is to win souls. Then, then how do you understand this end of verse 4? "They came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years." So what, what it means is, it, is it simply means that during this time, from Christ's ascension all the way up to the end, what's happening? People are coming to faith in Christ. They're going from death to life. Right? And they are not only, uh, uh, being raised from death to life, but then they reign. What does that mean? That means that they join him in his rescue mission and from now until the time he returns. Yes? Yes? Correct. Yeah, so he's saying that, uh, very, absolutely correct. So I would encourage you, and I would, would help you to understand the millennium as being, uh, not a literal period of 1,000 calendar years, but that it is a symbolic time that God is reigning, and He is reigning in a, in a way that is totally complete. So what is 1,000? It's 10 times 10 times 10. Right? It is God's full authority and reign to do one thing, and that is to reach people for Jesus. That is to plunder the house of Satan for, until that time is complete. That's the point. We all good so far? Yes? It's not a picture of heaven, it's a picture of earth. It's a picture of what's happening now. Yes. Yeah, so the, so the challenge here is that, um, the first resurrection is conversion. It's baptism. So what's the second resurrection? The resurrection of the dead. Okay? And this is, we're going to get to that in verses 11 and following. Okay? So when it's, so if you just skip down here, um, we want to make sure we're all on the same page so far. So verse 14, so it says, "Then death and Hades were thrown into the lake of fire." This is the second death. What's the first death? Nope. The first death is your own physical death. Makes sense? The second death is, is what, what it comes following. Yes? Yes, it is. Yep. Great point. So his point, uh, David is saying, "It sounds like it's only talking about martyrs." Right? Um, so let's go back. Let's just read it really slowly. Verse 4, "Then I saw thrones, and seated on them were those to whom the authority to judge was committed." Who are those people? It is what, uh, what theologians would call the church militant and the church triumphant. In other words, all Christians. Okay? So I'm, we come back here, but, uh, how much time we got? Okay, turn over to, uh, because Paul says something similar here in 1 Corinthians, chapter 6. So you can turn, turn to 1 Corinthians, chapter 6. And he's, he's using this as a, this kind of end of days and, uh, kind of apocalyptic imagery to think about how do we, how do we apply that to our day-to-day? Okay, so he's saying, he's talking about, "Why are you suing your brother and sister in Christ?" That's the context. So 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 1, "When one of you has a grievance against another, does he dare go to the, go to the, go to law before the unrighteous instead of the saints?" Look at verse 2, "Or do you not know that the saints will judge the world?" What does that mean? Do we, do we judge the world today? Yes. Um, so, let me go back here. So the, verse 4, it's church, uh, church militant, church on earth, and church in heaven. It's all people. Okay? Now, in, in verse 4, it's also going to, um, uh, differentiate a few people. Okay? "So also I saw the souls of those who had been beheaded." So now you have martyrs, right? But, but in, at the beginning of verse 4, it's all people. Right? "Beheaded for the testimony of Jesus and for the word of God, and those who had not worshiped the beast or its image, and had not received its mark on their foreheads or their hands." So this, this group of people here who had not worshiped the beast or its image, is it only referring to those who have been beheaded? No. It's referring to all Christians, all people who have, who have received the mark, not received the mark of the beast and worshipped its image, but instead have been marked by God. Does that make sense? You follow? Okay? So that is, so when it says, "they came to life," it's not referring to only these people that have been beheaded. It's referring to all Christians. Are you with me so far? Okay. So they came to life, uh, that is, they, they, um, they were converted. They came to faith in Jesus. Uh, they, uh, they received the Holy Spirit. Uh, they, they experienced the death and resurrection of Jesus, and it's applied to them through baptism. Okay? A lot of words, but this is what's going on. Okay? So they came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years. So do you reign now with Christ? Yes, you do. And we've talked about this already, uh, in, um, in Revelation, chapter 5. So turn back there. Revelation, chapter 5, verse 9. Says, "And they sang a new song, saying, 'Worthy are you to take the scroll and to open its seals; for you were slain, and by your blood you ransom people from every tribe and language and people and nation, and you have made them a kingdom of priests to our God.'" Where do you hear that, where have you heard that before? 1 Peter, chapter 2. Right? You're a priestet of all believers. Right? Um, and you've made them a kingdom of priests to our God, and they, go back and listen to this previous episode, but, uh, but not shall reign, but do reign. That they reign now, and they reign on the earth now. Okay? And what does it mean to reign? It doesn't mean with weapons. It means, uh, it means joining Jesus on his rescue mission for people. That's what it means. Okay? I think you're with me. Okay, so, um, say more about that. That it makes you mildly uncomfortable to think of yourself as a judge. What do you mean by that? Um, so are we making decisions on people's salvation? No, I agree. I get it. I get it. So are we as Christians, so called to speak, uh, we're called to speak two words. What are those two words? A word of law and a word of gospel. You follow me? I think the challenge, and I think the reason why, why it, it makes us feel uncomfortable uh, is because, if we're honest, are we more sure in our law proclamation? Or are we more confident in our gospel proclamation? You might be. Okay? What I'm saying is, is that, um, the, what we sometimes do, and I think about this all the time, even as a pastor and as a proclaimer of the word, I think about this all the time. So the law, basically, what that does is it, like, think about, it just guts people. It guts you. It guts me. And then when it comes to the gospel, what do we do? We give people a Band-Aid. That won't work. This, you follow me? So when we, so, so a lot of times what I hear in terms of Christian proclamation is I hear, I hear the law as being extremely confident, extremely clear. But then the gospel is kind of like, "Yeah, but Jesus loves you." See what I mean? And I'm not saying all people, I'm just saying, it's an observation. Yeah, I think that, uh, the challenge is, is that you can't have the, you can't have the gospel without the law. That's the challenge, and we, we really are, are challenged by that. Right? But you need both of, you need both. Right? Um, so I'm thinking about something here, and if I can find it, just to maybe be better at answering that question, not just with me yapping. Um, sure, sure. Um, yeah, I think that there is, uh, but you still, um, Paul is going to say, "I'm the worst of sinners. Let me tell you what my, let me tell you what my, what my life was like before Jesus. And let me tell you what Jesus did for me." Can you share that? Can you share your story and say, "Let me tell you how, how Jesus has saved a sinner like me, and He can do the same for you." Right? Of course you do. Of course you do. And, and so, uh, but the point is, is that, um, the, the, the Bonhoeffer would say that the gospel without the law is what? What does he call it? Remember? He calls it cheap grace. That's what he calls it. Right? So the gospel without repentance is cheap grace. And so we, we need, we, we need that. Right? Yeah. Oh, yes. That's really important. Amen. Super important. Um, so I'm going to put what you said in, in my words, and you correct me if, if I'm off the, I think it's so important to back, go back to what you're saying, Laura. When we proclaim the law, many times what happens is our gospel proclamation is all about behavior modification, sin management. That's not the gospel. So you, you, you come to somebody and you say, "You're a sinner, God doesn't want you to sin anymore." Uh, except Jesus. Uh, accept Jesus and, you know, and then, and then you're gonna behave rightly, and then God's gonna love you more." There's a lot of that going on. And the point is, is that to say, the gospel is that Jesus takes on all of that for you and makes you a new creation. That's good news. He in my place for me. Is that what you're saying? Alright. What time, what time we got? Okay, we're, we're behind, okay? Or we're over. Um, alright, so here's what I want you to do. Just one, uh, one more place, and then we'll, and then I'll pray and we'll be done. Okay, so Colossians, General Electric Power Company. Uh, Colossians, chapter 2. Is there a sense of, "Okay, you're a new creation, now go, uh, now go live it," right? This, there is, there is that, right? So, uh, Colossians, chapter 3, verse 1. "If then you have been raised with Christ..." What does that mean? That does not mean if you've gone, if you've died and gone to heaven. Says, "If you, then you have been raised with Christ, if you've been baptized into Jesus, then this is who you are. You're no longer this person, you're that person. And you're a new person, now live, live that way, constantly and forever, depending upon His grace more and more and more each day." Okay? Um, so baptism in, in, uh, in chapter, in, uh, Galatians, chapter 2, then in, in Revelation, chapter 20, um, is the first resurrection. Um, and then in verse 6, it says, of chapter 20, "Over such the second death has no power, but they will be priests of God and of Christ, and they will reign with him for a thousand years." This is the point, right? Is that, um, is that the second death, that is, that is, uh, the final judgment, okay? Has no power over you. That's good news. So guess what that means you get to do in this life? Risk it all for the sake of Christ and for the sake of others, okay? So, one really quick thing. Um, next week, the 28th, we're not gonna have Bible study. Here's why. We, I know, I know. You, we're, I want you to take some time, and I want you to join us in the Fellowship Center. We have six people on our staff who are celebrating anniversaries. Um, Sandy Erickson is celebrating 30 years. 30 years, y'all. Any day, don't look a day over 29, right? Um, uh, Jennifer Clark is gonna be celebrating, is celebrating. Most of them have already celebrated it, but, uh, but we're gonna recognize them. Uh, Jennifer Clark is celebrating 25 years. Uh, Barb Von Baron is celebrating 20 years. Um, Katie Seal, she's at about 16 years already, so we're, but we're gonna just call it 15 years, but she's more than 15 years, but 15 years for her. Um, we're gonna be celebrating 15 years for Mark Oxner, and y'all say, "Who's Mark Oxner?" But, uh, Mark Oxner's our IT guy, and he's awesome. Uh, and then the, the, another one we're gonna be celebrating is Tommy Cloud. He's been, uh, with us for five years, and so we're grateful for him. So what I want you to do next week is I want, is we're not gonna have anything here. We're gonna have some time to just stop by. You can put a card in the basket, uh, stop by, have a piece of cake or something like that, and just tell them thank you, and God bless you, and encourage them, uh, in the important work that they do, okay? But then, on, what is that? The 5th of October, uh, we're gonna take up the millennium, okay? So I'm gonna, the question I'm gonna ask you on that day is, "What is the millennium?" So, so do some research. Uh, get that in your mind. Is it, is it a literal thousand years? Is it not a literal thousand years? How do you, how do you think about it? There's lots of resources in your handout, so we're gonna take that up, um, and we're gonna go deep on, on the 5th, alright? So with that, let's, uh, let's close in prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your word, and I thank you for new life in Christ. And Lord, so many times, we don't, honestly, we don't feel like it. Uh, but not about what we feel, it's about what you say. It's about, uh, it's about your word, and your word is truth, and we're gonna have peace and confidence in it. Uh, so Lord, go with us out into this world, uh, where there's a battle going on, but also help us to be reminded, um, that 1 John, chapter 4, says that, "He who is in me, in us, is greater than he who is in the world." Give us confidence, and we pray in the name of Jesus. And all God's people said, "Amen." I will see you in a couple of weeks.